I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 16th, 2018 Papillion City Council meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
We've got some scouts with PAC 463 that were here visiting with Councilwoman Kluk before the meeting. They're with Courage Hill and I'd like to invite them up to lead us in the pledge. Gentlemen, you want to come on up? Thanks, guys. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That's correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got a special presentation tonight. Jeff, you want to come up? Marty Lemming. He's in the audience. I'm not sure why.[85.36][85.36](laughter) Marty, come on up. Marty not here. Marty left the room. People aren't aware Marty is retiring. I think he's got about 24 hours left or something like that from what I heard. But I want to give a proclamation to recognize Marty. So proclamation: Recognizing the retirement of Marty Lemming, Public Works Director, and honoring him for 43 years of outstanding service to the city of Papillion. Whereas Marty Lemming began his career in Public Works with the city of Papillion on October 30th, 1974 (there's people in this room that weren't born) and was promoted to Public Works Director (laughter) on November 17th, 1989 (still people that weren't born). Whereas Marty has faithfully and conscientiously served the city of Papillion and its citizens for 43 years during which period of time numerous projects were initiated through his leadership that will continue to have an impact on the city of Papillion for years to come. And whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community and the city of Papillion has benefited greatly because of Marty's leadership in guiding the Public Works Department. And whereas Marty has worked tirelessly for the betterment for the Papillion Public Work System which contributes to the health, safety, and comfort of this community and he cares genuinely for and appreciates his employees and colleagues. And whereas Marty received the 2017 Leader of the Year Award from the Nebraska Chapter of the American Public Works Association and achieved lifetime membership with the American Public Works Association in December of 2017. And whereas Marty has been a valuable and dedicated employee and his legacy of knowledge and service to the city of Papillion will carry on. Now therefore, a David P. Black, Mayor of the city of Papillion do hereby present this proclamation to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Marty Lemming for over 43 years of dedicated service and countless contributions to the city of Papillion. We wish Marty and his family the very best in retirement.
Wow.
Yeah. You're stealing my line.
Was that the opener?
That was my question.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jeff.
Were you doing my notes?
Well, it seems like we've been talking about this day for an awful long time and I think for Marty, the day probably hasn't come quick enough. But I've had the pleasure of knowing Marty for about 13 or 14 years, but I really didn't get to know him until I started working for the city of Papillion. He really took me under his wing, looked out for me no matter what the circumstances were. And he didn't set up a wall or feel threatened by my employment here because that's the kind of guy Marty really is. He embraced me in my new role here at the city. You see, Marty's one of those guys that's a giver. He gives unselfishly and without regret. He doesn't think about himself first. He just thinks about how he can help the circumstances and other people regardless of the situation. As the mayor said, he's served the city for 43 years and he's made sacrifices. He's spent many nights out on sewer backups and water main breaks. He's spent several holidays behind the helm of our snowplow operations away from his family just so that other people could go and see their families. He's overseen countless emergency efforts and supervised their cleanup. And if you know Marty well at all, he's always done it with a smile and a laugh. His unique ability to always lighten the mood, I think that that's probably what we'll miss most about Marty around the Public Works office. We've had some really good laughs. We've laughed until we've cried and sometimes the laughter is just kind of spread throughout the hallways of the Public Works facility and even City Hall. Marty, we're truly going to miss you and the joy you bring to our lives. When Jerry Matthews retired in February, we sat around and kind of brainstormed on what we could do to really symbolize Jerry's retirement because he moved a lot of dirt in the city and just kind of put his own unique footprint. And when we sat down to think about what we were going to do for Marty, it was kind of tough because he's done so much for the city. I wasn't on the job for very long before we brainstormed about potentially setting up a customized manhole cover for all of the city of Papillion sewer manholes. And so we felt it was appropriate that we carry that forward. We turned the original prototype that we received that night that I dedicated to Marty shortly after the start of my employment into a coffee table that resides at the Public Works facility. With the help of Mr. Arden Gross at the Papillion La Vista School District, we were able to put together something that was unique for Marty, something that no one else will have and has a little bit of Papillion taste and flavor on it. I'd like to go ahead and unveil that now. For the top of this table, we selected Jenny and I, Jen Riesler, and I selected a piece of rough-cut white ash. And for several reasons, the white ash tree is known for its strengths, its hardness, and its adaptability. White ash is the wood used for Louisville sluggers, which Marty is an avid baseball fan, coached his sons' baseball games throughout the years as well as still watches a lot of games. Nora's mythology refers to the ash as the mighty tree that supports the heavens, symbolizing knowledge, wisdom, focus, spirituality, justice, and protection. No other wood has the pliant strong yet light qualities of the ash wood. The legs of the table were actually spindles that we salvaged from the pedestrian bridge overpass. We actually took the railing from the overpass or sections of it and had one of our Public Works gentlemen, Josh Rota, actually fabricate those legs for the actual table. So we felt it was appropriate, given the fact that that bridge was constructed about the start of Marty's tenure and just recently had come down to replace it, that it was appropriate to go ahead and use that material for the legs of this table. No one else has them and won't, so we felt it was kind of special. Obviously, the logo is the city seal, but if you notice on the logo itself, there's a number on the top in the center, 702, and we put it in parentheses as retired. That's Marty's handle on the radio when he's out on the road making calls to, you know, water staff on water main breaks or snow forces. That's the handle that he goes by. And so after tonight, we will retire that number from Public Works. I know he'd asked that we carry that forward and asked that we assign that to Jenny as her new handle, but we really felt it was more appropriate to retire it for Marty. Marty, we wanted to give you something that was unique and one of a kind. You're a very special man and I thank you for your friendship and all your support. We hope you enjoy your retirement and I know you won't be a stranger.[556.04][556.04](laughter)
Thank you, Mayor. I've changed this speech several times. I cut and pasted here about 5 o'clock if you can tell, so bear with me. Mayor, I may need a little more than five minutes, if that'll be okay?
We'll grant it this time.
Okay. All right, thank you. I opened with "Wow." I see you did. So first and foremost, I need to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for without Him, none of this would have been possible. Secondly, I need to thank my family, my awesome and amazing wife of 35-plus years, Julie, my two children, Zachary and Chelsea. Through these years, my work took me away from things such as dinners, school events, holidays, et cetera, just to name a few, due to snowstorms, water main breaks, sewer plugs, wind events, special events, other related items, the phone calls at all hours of the day and night, weekends, my 45-minute talk with a citizen at 2:00 a.m. one morning where Julie says, "Just hang up on her."[640.04][640.04](laughter) You know? I says, "I can't do that." So we carried on a conversation for 45 minutes. I know we will never get this time back, but I want you to know that without your unconditional love and faithfulness, we made it through all those nights and days. Thank you. Mayor Black, council members, thank you, thank you, thank you for having faith in me that I will accomplish your goals and objectives that you would expect out of a Public Works Director. You have all been very supportive to me and the Public Works Department over all these years. Thanks to each one of you. It has been a true honor to serve this city in this role. Little did I know, when I came to work that Monday morning in late July of 1974, did I know that this job would end up being my career. What a ride it has been. As I spoke to Mayor Black back in November of 2016 that I had hit a wall where I knew it was time for me to pass this position on to someone as my time here was ending, I want to say I have been truly blessed to have worked for such an awesome community, one in which I grew up in, raised my family in, and one place that I probably will call my home. I have been fortunate to have worked under seven mayors, Oliver, Greckel, Wallace, Goodman, Glenn, Black. Five of them have graciously appointed me as their Public Works Director. How humble and appreciative I've felt every four years. Chris, thank you for all your support through our time together here. You're the same person as when you first started here. Your honesty, integrity, your willingness to listen, et cetera. You've never changed. Your never-changing love is the best way I can describe it. Thank you for everything. You are in the right position at the right time for what this community needs as a city administrator. My fellow department heads, Lori, Tony, Mark, Bill, Scott, Nancy, Carla, Amber, Nicole, Becky, Sean, Carrie, Trent, thank you for all your tremendous support throughout these years. What more can I say but I truly appreciate all your total dedication and teamwork is what sets this community apart from so many others. To Jeff, Jennifer, and the remaining men and women at Public Works, Mark, Mike, Derek, Louise, Jill, Amy, Doug Bickel, Doug Bonzo, Rick, Rich, Nick, Dan L., Dan S., Pete, Gabe, John, Jeff, A.J., Mike McLaughlin, Dana, Scott Anderson, Scott Gracer, Chris, Craig, Don, Ray, Eric, Jake, Josh, Parker, Travis, Scott Campbell, and Glenn. Hopefully, I got everyone. A lot of you I hired or had a part in. Thank you all. Thank you for all you have done while working under my leadership. For it was you, men and women, whose boots have been on the ground, hands behind the wheel, answering the phones, et cetera. You have been the ones who have made my job easy. Personnel issues, that's another little story, but just kidding there. That is all part of this amazing job I have had. As I've always said, I would go to war with you, men and women. As you are all talented in many ways, it has been a true joy to work alongside each of you. Jeff, you are the right person to take this department to the next level and beyond. I did not have the privilege to choose you, but those that did made the right choice. In this last year of transition, you have shown and demonstrated that you are the one. The staff is behind you and I've already seen awesome changes, new ideas taking place. Thanks, my friend, for the daily laughs and just for being you. Do not change anything. You will take this department far and the citizens of this community will be proud of the accomplishments. Jennifer, wow, what can I say? You've been my right arm for a long time. You've been my rock and someone who truly listens and provides me with feedback that I need to hear. You are truly a person who cares about the city, one who has been through all the highs and lows I have gone through. Thanks for all your support and most of all, thanks for your friendship. I could say these types of things about all of my staff, but just thanks for everything you, men and women, have done for the department, this community. Keep doing what you do because you are all great at doing what you do. To all the other men and women within the police, fire, finance, HR, administration, golf, building, recreation, planning, legal, library, parks, and Papio Vision, I want to say thanks to all of you. For at one point or another, we have worked or assisted on some sort of project, disaster, or event throughout my time here. You all have a special place in my heart. I've enjoyed laughing with all of you. Keep doing what you do. You're all doing it well. I will cherish the moments we shared. Last and maybe the most important people I need to thank is Mom and Dad. For it was them who instilled in me my work ethic. They both showed me what you should do and how you should provide for your family. I was taught that you give it. You give your employer an honest day's work for an honest day's pay. Dad, I know you're up there looking down at me tonight. I just want to say thanks, Dad. I love you. Mom, you're awesome and amazing. I love you too. I want to thank also my three brothers, Rocky, Lucky, and Cory, and my sister Carla. I just want to apologize if I missed anyone. This has kind of been hard. I was going to take this mic out and drop it, but because this meeting still has to go on, I didn't want to break the mic and end the meeting. So with that, thank you all. I appreciate
Any council want to share some words?
I'll start. As one of the longest-serving members of the city council, I tend to look back a lot. And when Marty's involved, I look back. And I remember when I got on the city council for the first time, I was a relatively new resident of Papillion, and I didn't know who Marty Lemming was. I didn't care who Marty Lemming was. You know, I was just somebody that I met once I got on the council. But I learned quickly that Marty Lemming was somebody you could count on. You said you gave an honest day's work. No, no, no. You gave over and above what was required of you, over and over again. And I, for one, quickly recognized that. And, you know, now as I look back and just, I see the physical changes in Papillion, and I'm struck over and over again by how many physical changes there have been in Papillion during the time you and I have been here. And, you know, it's amazing how many physical things there are in Papillion that have the imprint of Marty Lemming. You know, and I also look back and I think of, okay, I look at those things, I think, well, all right, we sit here, we come in here, and we run for election, and we get elected, and we get written up in the newspaper. And we come in here and we pass ordinances and, you know, contracts and all that kind of stuff. But I spent my career as a government employee and I know, and I know very well, that really what makes a city work is people like Marty Lemming, who come to work every day and do more than is ever required of them. And that was Marty. Now Marty, tonight will say a lot of respectful words. Great words of honor for you, but I want to point out something else that I see. I look around in this room and I see the number of your coworkers and people you worked with, people you supervised, who have given up their time to come in here and honor you for just a few minutes here. I recognize that we can say a lot of nice things about you, but believe me, in my mind, nothing says anything as great about you as looking out there and seeing what you have, you know, the impact you have had on people that you've worked with. And we can't say any words greater than what your coworkers have already said. So I know you can walk out of here tonight and go off into retirement and enjoy yourself, knowing that you have genuinely made Papillion better. But possibly more importantly, you have had an impact on people's lives. And that's something that we all can hope that we can say, and you certainly can. So I'll just say thank you very much.
Mr. Ingberg.
Well, I've been thinking about it since you announced you were going to retire, which has been a few months now. And as Tom said, you start to think back to things. And the first thing I thought of was the fact that Marty and I, I started out in the Public Works Department. He and I started within two months of each other. So we've kind of known each other that long. And the second thing I thought about is, it's really kind of strange how things work out. You said it in your speech. You never dreamt this would be your career. Well, who would have thought, all these years later, you're up here accepting all these platitudes for a great job that you did as a Public Works Director, and I'm sitting here. It makes absolutely no sense, but it's what Papillion's about. I think that all the things, as Tom said, we talked about tonight, all the great things you do. And I find it amazing how many people that are citizens realize how many great things you do. That's really unusual. And the way I look at it a little bit is how you can really measure what an impact you've had on not only the people in the community, your employees, the city council. The real impact is you spoiled us all rotten. I mean, you really have. And that's really a huge measure. And you went above and beyond that. I mean, when it snows, people here don't worry about the roads. Marty will take care of it. They don't worry about the parks being in good shape. They don't worry about if something happens at 3:00 in the morning. You know, it may take a few days, a week. No, it won't. Marty won't let that happen. So you've spoiled all of us. And I think you should be very proud of that fact. You've had such an impact here and eased people's minds about things so much. That's truly, truly unique. And I don't know anybody else in this city that could say that. So thank you, Marty. I hope I still see you around once in a while. Don't forget us other old people.
Mr. Glover.
I would just like to say I had the opportunity to work with Marty many, many times with the school district and all the water breaks and the things that went on. And in fact, I started the school district in 1973, so I watched Marty grow up and grow through this job. And not one time, in a lot of situations, many of them, after dark and late at night, not one time did he ever act disgusted or look at you like, you know, maybe you should be doing that instead of me. I will say though, as far as staff members, the people that worked under Marty, he had your back many, many times. And I'm not sure that he remembers this, but one time in the summer, I tilled my street from the street back to my sidewalk because it was mainly weeds, and I tilled it all up and I put nice grass there. And I left for the day and come back that night, and all my dirt and grass seed was in the gutter because somebody had opened up, you know, the water hydrant right next to there. So I called Marty up and I says, Marty, I says, "I'm very unhappy." And I says, "I want somebody down here tomorrow putting grass seed and dirt down on this." And he says, "Yeah," he says, "you know, we don't do that kind of thing." And I said, "Well, then just tell me who did it and have them stop by tomorrow so I can talk with them." Because I had every intention of grabbing that guy and choking him, whoever it was. Maybe some lady, I don't know. But Marty would never tell me who it was that did that. And I would have to think, you know, many of the people that have worked for Marty went through the school and I had the opportunity to have to discipline some of them. I had to think that maybe it was somebody like that, but Marty would never tell me who it was. So congratulations and good luck. I can tell you, after being retired for seven years now, there is nothing better, really. So good luck.
Ms. Kluk.
Marty, congratulations. I hope this is a very exciting time to you as you get to start doing some other things and not have those 2:00 a.m. phone calls with strangers. I just want to say thank you because you're really leaving an amazing legacy. It's not like when you leave, we lose you. We don't. There's a lot of great people still here that understand the Martyisms of this community, what it means to give an honest day's work, what it means to help your neighbor like you're supposed to. And that doesn't just mean on the job for Marty. If you're out and about in the community, you'll see him stopping and he'll help somebody whose trash can has blown down the street, and he's the one dragging it back to them to make sure that they have it, especially if he knows it's somebody who has an extra need or a special need. Marty's the one that, when I have Boy Scouts that are stuck on a project and we just don't know where to go, I've picked up the phone more than a couple handful of times and I've called Marty and say, "What would you recommend?" And Marty's there. He makes sure that those boys know what's going on. He's helped me with some Girl Scout stuff. He's the one who's at Hy-Vee, working with them to make sure that the less fortunate have a little something to eat when it can be worked out. Those are the legacies that we all are going to get to enjoy as we continue to move forward. And we still have Marty living in our community so that we will get to see him. So while it's a bummer we are not going to see you every day in City Hall, it's going to be amazing to watch what continues to happen as you've changed your direction in life. So best of luck to you and thank you for everything you've started for us.
Mr. Stube.
Thank you. Marty, I first met Marty before he even became involved in Public Works. Marty's son and my son kind of played sports together, and that's how I first got introduced to Marty. There's no question, he's a great individual. He loves his baseball. One of the things about public service is that it sometimes has a tendency to be a thankless job. You don't necessarily always get people calling you up and say, "Thank you for doing this" or "Thank you for doing that." Obviously, with all the people that are in attendance here today, your employees, I think they've recognized, and it's kind of like, "Thank you, Marty, for the good job that you've done for the citizens of Papillion. This is great." There's no question also that putting in 40 years of public service, working for that many mayors, that obviously you did things right. They might not necessarily always accepted the answer you gave them, but you gave them the honest answer, that you were trustworthy, and there's no question about it. You're a dedicated employee and the citizens of Papillion really have to be thankful for what you've provided to this community that touches people pretty much every day. So congratulations to you and good luck in your retirement.
Mr. Gaines.
I just wanted to congratulate you. I haven't had as much time to work with you. Over the last five years, though, I can tell you that there's numerous times that I've called Public Works or emailed you, and you've always just been there right away to take care of us. You know, one of the things that I just wanted to mention was, there's a lot of people that call me and say, "Hey," you know, "Thanks," just jokingly, "thanks for getting my street plowed," or "thanks for this," or "thanks for that." But it's the work that you've done that's really made our job a lot easier, and I just really wanted to thank you for it. So.
Marty, you gave me, you mentioned it, a year's notice. One, thank you for that because it did allow for a great transition. And I think that speaks to the heart of who you are, and I just want to say integrity. It was incredible. You didn't have to do that. A lot of times, we talk about Papillion being a special place, and over time, it's been hard to, it can kind of sound political. Papillion's a special place, want to keep small-town values, but really have struggled of, what's that mean? And I've got a handful of pictures that I keep that said, "This is what makes Papillion special." One of them's the downtown picture with the parade and the American flag. Everybody sees that picture. But a picture of Marty is in that. There's a lot of people in this community. Bob, Mr. Stube had mentioned that a lot of times, people don't know the government employees. You walk around this community, people know Marty Lemming. And a lot of people, I would say, Papillion, Marty Lemming is Papillion. You are what made it special. I've had the I've had the privilege of getting a lot of phone calls from people in situations, and by the time it gets to me, it's already resolved. And some of them are not nice situations. I think one of the worst things that can happen to somebody other than a police or fire showing up at your house is probably a sewer backup. That destroys everything. And the number of phone calls of people saying, "That was the worst thing that happened to them, but they had a wonderful experience because of Marty and that situation. They were ready for a fight with the city, they were ready for things, and you showed up," and they walk away smiling because they had a sewer backup. But I think it's just the heart of what, one of the things that we're hoping to continue to instill once you're gone is just that aspect of customer service. It's not government bureaucracy. The residents deserve customer service, and I think that's where the idea of looking to start wearing bracelets of WWMD, "What Would Marty Do?" And I've already used that in some cases. You literally get into a situation, and you think, "I don't know, what would Marty do?" And that's going to guide you to the right answer. So the impact you have had on this community is just incredible, and I don't know what we can say beyond "thank you," but thank you. Julie, a lot of sacrifice on the family side, so thank you as well. We're going to, there is some cake out there. We've got a fairly quick meeting. Actually, this presentation was probably, took longer than the rest of the meeting's going to take, so I would invite people to hang around, and we'll have a reception afterwards with cake and coffee. Like I said, we do have a fairly light agenda. So again, Marty's day, we should adjourn it right now and just call it quits. The rest of it's going to dilute the day, but Ms. Myers.
What an act to follow. First of all, wow. My message to you, Marty, is going to pale in comparison to your contributions to the city, but on behalf of all the city employees, congratulations and best wishes on your retirement. You have made such a difference with your constant optimism, enthusiasm, and willingness to help. We will really miss you. Thank you for the warm wishes and your kind words to me. That means a lot. Thank you. But again, you have set the bar very high for all of us to follow. We will do our very best to follow in your footsteps, but thank you again for everything you've done for me personally and for the city of Papillion. Now, onto some city business. Mayor Black and I were invited to attend the pro-board meeting on Thursday night to provide them some information on the community centers, so we will be doing that. Tim will be accompanying us to answer the difficult questions, Tim. Also, I want to let you know that Lori and Amber are preparing a grant application for funds under the Civic and Community Center Financing Fund for the Community Center and Field House. We are eligible for up to $750,000. That application goes in the middle of February, and we should know the 1st of April if we were successful, but certainly will add to that project. The Serpicee County Chamber of Commerce Grand Giveaway is scheduled for Thursday, March 19th, at the Beardmore Event Center in Papillion. Oh, yeah, exactly right, in Bellevue. Please let Ellie know if you'd like to attend. And then, United Cities is actively reviewing and responding to proposed legislation. What's got our attention, at least at this point, is LB-884, which removes the limitation on a county sales tax that would also be applicable in municipalities. So the Revenue Committee is hearing this bill on Thursday of this week, and Papillion has expressed opposition to the proposed bills. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is Item E1, Ordinance 1800, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of certain unimproved real property consisting of approximately 1.87 acres located in the Papillion Business and Technology Park on the southwest corner of 72nd Street and Cornhusker Road, Papillion, Nebraska, legally described as part of Tax Lot 30, except parts taken for Plat 261412 in Serpicee County, Nebraska, depicted as Parcel A, as Parcel 1 on Exhibit A attached to the ordinance, and incorporated therein to Family Emergency Rooms LLC, and to provide for an effective date. This is a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Ordinance 1797, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R2, single-family residential medium-density, to R3, urban-family residential, for the property legally described as Lot 278 Walnut Creek Hills, generally located on the southwest corner of 90th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1797? Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Kluk. Council discussion. Mr. Mumgarden.
Yeah, before I vote on this, I just want to make a declaration that I am a member of the congregation of Trinity Lutheran Church. Clearly, as a member, I will be helping finance this great improvement, but I do not hold any office with the church or any other leadership position, so I don't think I have any conflict of interest, and I will vote on it.
I would agree, and if there's any council that would have a concern on a conflict, go ahead and raise that, but I would agree that there is not any conflict on that. Mr. Ingberg.
Ditto what he said.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F2, Resolution 180019. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit to allow bed and breakfast as a permitted use on the property legally described as the north half of Lot 11 and all of Lot 12, Block 27, South Papillion, together with all of Lot 10 and the south half of Lot 11, Block 27, South Papillion, generally located at 245 West Halleck Street and 711 South Jackson Street. The applicants are Gary and Jerry Cordis, Cordis Bed and Breakfast, and this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? I know the applicant is here. Do we have any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R180019? Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Stube. Council discussion. Mr. Mumgarden.
Yeah, could one of the Cortises come up? I have a question. Oh, I'm sure you can. All right, I think I understand what you're going to do, because there's two addresses involved here. The resolution, the approval, is contingent upon quite a number of conditions, and I take it you've seen those, and that's okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. And probably more importantly, we have received a letter from one of your neighbors.
Correct.
And their concern primarily is that this will become a party place. What do you have to say about that? What assurance can you give us and your neighbors? That this is not going to be the College World Series, two weeks of parties at the Cortises?
Well, we live right next door to this little cottage, and we would not like that to be part of our neighborhood at all. And there is a hedge around, so it's really a private little area with a background, but we wouldn't want anything like that going right next door to us either, so we will not let that happen.
Have you, obviously, your neighbor several houses down knows your plans? Have you talked with the other neighbors?
Well, they all were given the letters, so.
Okay.
That's the only neighbor that I know, and I don't know if I should approach that person or not, so I have not. I did ask the planning commission if they would pass my letter on to them, so assure her that there shouldn't be any partying going on, you know?
Well, with you living next door to this, I can trust that, no, the parties, if nothing else, will be pretty sedate parties.
Well, yeah.
So I just wanted to...
And there is a hedge all the way around, so it's, like I said, it's really private. The area, the yard is really private.
With that assurance, I have no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Thank you.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. I want to thank you, too. I think it's going to be just another unique thing in the old downtown area, so thank you for what you're doing there. Appreciate it. We do have a closed session tonight, and we're going to defer the next item to the closed session, and then we only have one other agenda item, so the council's going to go into closed session. So everybody that's here, if you want to go ahead and start the reception and the party, we'll join right afterwards, because I don't think our session's going to be that long. But with that in mind, is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss negotiation regarding potential litigation with Region 7 EPA? Motion by Councilwoman Kluk.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. I will restate for the record, the purpose of the closed session is only to discuss negotiation regarding potential litigation, Region 7 EPA. Closed session will include the mayor, city council, city administrator, assistant city administrator, city engineer, city attorney, and city clerk. Is there a motion to come out of closed session? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines.
Six eight zero nays.
Next is Item F3, Resolution R180022, a resolution to authorize the city administrator to negotiate a settlement, execute any necessary documents and agreements with Region 7 EPA. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180022?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Kluk.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
Motion passes. I don't think any committees have met. No comments from the floor, I don't believe. No comments? Any council comments? Really, just the only couple of updates is legislature is back in session, so the United Cities did meet again, kind of reviewing the bills that are being introduced. I think there's 10 days to introduce bills, if I remember right, so that period is still open, so we'll be monitoring that. Hearings are starting. There was a legislative coffee. Ms. Koemer, Ms. Myers, I believe Mr. Mumgarden, myself were there, got updates from the senators of what their agendas were. I think most of it's going to be taken up with the tax conversations that are going on, so I don't know if there will be a lot locally. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilwoman Kluk, second by Councilman Glover. Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
We are adjourned.